Hey, Earl.
Hi, Earl.
Oh, okay.
We can hear you.
Okay.
So, Adam, I was gonna go through the roll call, then introduce staff, and then ask anyone who has joined elsewise to identify themselves.
Okay.
Okay? Okay, good afternoon, planning commissioners, and thank you for attending this electronic meeting. We'll be starting off with a roll call, followed by an introduction of city staff, and then by those individuals who represent the applicant. So, we're starting with the roll call. Ms. Austin?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Here.
Ms. Shelton?
Here.
Mr. Hales?
Here.
Mr. Fraley?
Here.
Okay, that's planning commission staff. We have George. George, you wanna introduce yourself? Oh, George is on. George Holman with the director of... There you go.
I'm sorry, George Holman.
Lenny?
Good morning, this is... or afternoon, this is Lenny Newcomb, Assistant Planning Director.
Adam?
Adam Malita, Deputy City Attorney, Planning Commission.
My name is Susan Pollak. I'm with the Planning Department. Sherry?
I'm Sherry Williams with the Planning Department.
We have Paul Ashay.
Paul Ashay, Chief Planner with the Planning Department.
Jeremy?
Jeremy Yee with Cambridge Home. I'm here for the Costco Wholesale CUP application.
Jeremy Sharp?
I'm sorry.
What's going on?
Must have it on you. Jeremy Sharp, who's also a planner with the Planning Department. And then we have Ken Creemans. Richard Bull, Alan Bull.
Alan Bull, City Clerk.
There we go. Do we have anyone else in staff?
Lisa.
Alicia Smith.
Hello.
Melissa Reeve.
One at a time, go ahead.
Melissa Reeve?
And you're with?
The City Clerk's office.
Thank you. All right. Those of you who have called in, if you could please state... No, Jeremy, you're... This book... Can we do it again? Those of you who have called in, could you please state your name, address, which item you're here for, and if you are an applicant, opponent, or a proponent? Is there anyone here for item two, signature homes? Or signature builders? Okay, doesn't appear like we have anyone for that item. Is there anyone here for item number three, Costco?
Yes. So, this is Jeremy Yee with Cambridge Home. Address is 4525 Main Street, Suite 1000, Virginia Beach. We are the applicants for the item three, Costco Wholesale CUP application.
Okay.
Susan, that case, that name.
Yes, sir.
Jeremy Yee, Y-E-E.
Chat. Okay.
Yes, sir.
But, yeah. I can hear it pretty well. Okay.
Anyone else on the line? Has joined the meeting?
Oh, I think we're... Your mic is on.
Uh, Susan?
I believe there was someone that just joined the meeting.
Hello?
Susan, this is Jeremy again. On the line, we also have John Paul Andrews. He's the Director of Real Estate of Costco. And we also have the architect, NG2, John Alvarado on the phone as well for the item three, Costco Wholesale Application.
Oh, yeah, okay. I put it on.
Thank you. Anyone else? I think we're ready for your opening statement.
Uh, thank you, Susan. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
It does appear that we do have a quarrel. And I wanna say good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. This is a public hearing for the City of Norfolk Planning Commission. On March 12th, 2020, by Executive Order Number 51, the Governor declared a state of emergency related to the pandemic outbreak COVID-19, commonly known as coronavirus, so that the Commonwealth could... would be better able to respond to the potential spread of this communicable disease and the threat it presents to the public. The nature of this particular emergency presents additional safety risks when any group of people greater than 10 is assembled in a single location based on current guidance of the Federal Centers for Disease Control and the Governor. As a result, public bodies such as this planning commission are currently authorized to meet by electronic means in accordance with Virginia Code Section 2.2-3708.2. The purpose of today's meeting is to take action that will address the current emergency. For that reason, all but two of the items on our agenda will be continued. Today, we will consider only those items related to projects that were previously under construction or uses that were related to essential retail businesses. If you wish to speak on an item on today's agenda, you should have identified yourself at the beginning of this teleconference. If you did not, please do so now. Hearing none. For each item, staff will give a presentation. Next, the commission will hear from the proponents and then from the opponents, if there are any. Anyone who has previously identified themselves during this teleconference will be called by name.
Has joined the meeting.
At that time, you should identify yourself by name and provide your mailing address. Your time will be limited to three minutes. After all opponents and proponents and opponents have been heard, any commissioner may ask additional information from the applicant or anyone who previously spoke. At the conclusion of the hearing on each item, and after considering all information presented, the commission will take action on the matter. Action on each matter will be accomplished by majority vote to either continue or to recommend approval or denial. The statement of the motion and the affirmative by a member of the staff is a matter of voting procedure and in no way indicates the recommendation of the staff or the consensus of the commission. In the event that the commission votes to recommend either approval or denial, our recommendation will include findings as to why such action is necessary to address the emergency described in the government's declaration.
Has joined the meeting.
And our recommendation will be forwarded to City Council. Anyone who appears before the commission will be notified by the City Clerk's office of the date on which the City Council will consider the application. However, it is the responsibility of each applicant to contact the City Clerk's office to confirm the hearing date and time of the City Council public hearing. With that, we'll get into our presentation.
Has joined the meeting. Can we... I think I've heard about three new people joining the meeting. Can you identify yourselves and what entity you're with?
Yes, this is John Alvarado with NG2, who are the architects for Costco.
And this is John Paul. Sorry.
Go ahead.
And this is John Paul, first name, Andrews, last name, Director of Real Estate for Costco Wholesale.
One other?
Is there one other? Hearing none.
Okay, moving along. Okay, before taking up the items on today's agenda, the following items will be continued until the May 28th, 2020 Planning Commission Public Hearing. Item number one, City Planning Commission for a text amendment to the Norfolk zoning ordinance to more clearly address parking and vehicle storage pavement requirements. Item number four, Carina Michelle Permanent Cosmetics for a conditional use permit at 738 West 22nd Street, Suite 10, to operate a tattoo parlor. The purpose of this request is to allow for the operation of a new tattoo parlor. Item number five, Sanctuary for the following conditional use permits at 2550 Boundsbury Road, Building 155A, Restaurant with Extended Hours of Operation, B, Live Entertainment. The purpose of these requests is to allow the restaurant to operate with live entertainment until 2:00 a.m. Item number six, Low Dive Gallery for the following conditional use permits at 117 East Princess Anne Road, A, Restaurant with Extended Hours of Operation, B, Sale of Alcoholic Beverages on Premises, C, Live Entertainment. The purpose of these requests is to allow the restaurant to operate with live entertainment until 2:00 a.m. Item number seven, Grandiflora for a conditional use permit for the sale of alcoholic beverages off premises at 1231 Bosavane Avenue. The purpose of this request is to allow the restaurant to sell alcoholic beverages for off-premises consumption. And the last one, item number eight, City of Norfolk to vacate the right-of-way at 4th Bay Street, south of East Stationview Avenue and north of Pretty Lake Avenue. Again, these items will be continued to the May 28th, 2020 Planning Commission Public Hearing. Ms. Austin? Ms. Austin? We'll come back to Ms. Austin. Ms. Hou... Mr. Hou... Noticing Mr. Hou's is absent. Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Ms. Shelton?
Yes.
Mr. Hales?
Aye.
And Mr. Fraley?
Aye.
Okay, now to the first item on today's agenda. Item number two, Signature Home Builders for a change of zoning from conditional SF10, Single Family 10 to SF10, Single Family 10 at 160 to 164 Hanover Avenue. The purpose of this request is to remove the conditional rezoning on the property. Okay. So, this is a request by Signature Home Builders. The property is located on the east side of Hanover Avenue between Attarly and Hargrove. It is a residential neighborhood of Glen Rock. The applicant is proposing to construct two single-family homes on the lot. In 2008, the property was conditionally rezoned, and the zoning allowed smaller lots. They were 50 by 5,000 square feet. One of the conditions that was proffered was a very specific house design. The current applicant would like to build a different house design. The one on the left was... of your slide is the one that was proffered. The one on the right is the one the current applicant would like to build. To be able to build a different home design, the applicant is required to modify the conditions. In this case, we're going to eliminate them through the zoning process. Staff is recommending that this application be approved. And as I recall, I don't believe we have any either the applicants or opponents or proponents on this application signed on to this call.
Susan, thank you. Couple of things. In your proposed ordinance, I've read two different addresses. In the proposed ordinance, it says address 160 and 194. So, we might wanna make that change in the proposed ordinance.
Yes, sir.
Noted.
Another question. We... Is this applicant different from the original applicant, Susan?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions, commissioners?
Yes, sir.
Okay, ready?
So, Susan, the correct addresses, I think, are 160 and 164.
That is correct.
That's correct.
In your motion. Thank you.
Right.
Okay. The motion is to find that the home is being built on this property where already under construction based on building permits issued by the city, but the construction has been stopped because of limitations imposed by the existing zoning, that the buildings on this property are not fully weatherized and are not structurally complete, which present a risk that further land completion would result in damage to persons or property, that because of the pandemic emergency, economic activity and livelihood, including construction work, is being negatively impacted, and that delaying the consideration of the item will only worsen the negative impact on economic activity and needlessly risk damage to persons and property, and to recommend approval of the rezoning as requested for 160 and 164 Hanover Avenue. Ms. Austin?
She just texted yes.
And Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Ms. Shelton?
Yes.
Mr. Hales?
Aye.
Mr. Fraley?
Aye.
We will make that recommendation to the City Council.
Okay. The second item on the agenda is for Costco Wholesale for the following conditional use permits at Eastside Glen Rock Road, G-Pen 1457, 578587, and 850 Glen Rock Road, A, Retail Sales over 50,000 square feet, B, Gasoline Sales as an accessory use, C, Tire Sales and Repair, D, Sale of Alcoholic Beverages Off Premises, and E, Sale of Smoking or Vaping Products. The purpose of these requests is to allow an expansion of the existing establishment. Again, this is a request by Costco Wholesale. The site is located at the northeast intersection of Glen Rock Road and Poplar Hall Drive. The use is there now. The applicant is proposing an expansion. As I indicated, Costco is their current... They are already operating retail sales over 50,000 square feet, a gasoline sales as an accessory use, tire sales and repair, sale of alcoholic beverages for off-premises, and sale of smoking or vaping products. However, the applicant is proposing an expansion to the rear. All of these uses were and have been operating prior to the zoning ordinance modifications which require a conditional use permit. The expansion, however, does require them to come into compliance, which means obtaining a conditional use permit for all of these uses, which would bring them fully into compliance. So, again, the applicant is simply asking for the use permits to come into compliance to allow them to do an expansion to the rear of the site. Staff is recommending that the application be approved subject to, and there are the standard conditions that go into this type of... or these types of conditional use permits.
Thank you, Susan. I had... I did have a couple of questions. First, it looks like the expansion is gonna take place on what would be the north side of the building or what is the rear of the building. And there is a... I'll call it a driveway there now. Will that driveway be... Will they still have that driveway there once the expansion is completed?
Yes, that won't change. And I'm trying to get... I do have... Not letting me forward. I do have... There we go. So, there's the expansion, and you can still see the driveway.
Okay, so they... They expanded into the driveway, but is enough space there to allow for the addition of driveway space so they can get through there with heavy vehicles and stuff?
Correct.
Okay. Susan, I also read in the application that our zoning ordinance speaks to alcoholic beverages being dispensed in packages of six or more. They wanna do four, minimum of four. So, if we allow this, are we opening up a Pandora's Box with regard to off-premise use of alcoholic beverages?
So, we've actually already done this with two of the Aldi's 'cause that is their practice as well. So, I don't think so. I mean, it tends to be, I think, the larger wholesale grocery-type stores.
Mr. Chairman, I've mentioned that many of the crafters are packaging their product in packages of either four cans or four bottles. So, that's become a fairly standard package size for craft beers.
Have we gotten any feedback from the community at all? Positive or negative, anybody?
I believe we have support from the community.
Larry Hill.
Has joined the meeting.
Any other questions, commissioners?
Paul Pyer.
Has joined the meeting.
Yes, sir. That's me.
Matt, Kathy, any questions?
No, I just wanted to say, since we have some Costco folks on here, that I've been doing some shopping for people who can't. And I've been at the Costco quite a few times in the last couple of weeks. And your employees are absolute rock stars. And we are so appreciative of everything they're doing here in Norfolk, especially those of us who are trying to help out some of our neighbors by getting some goods. They are absolutely wonderful, so positive every time you go in, just excellent. So, thank you, Costco, for having such awesome employees and helping us out during this time.
Thanks, Kathy. Kevin, Ramona, any comment or question?
Yes, sir.
Ramona has a question that she has sent in concerning the continuance of the selling of vaping products. I don't believe they actually sell vaping products at this time.
Well, we do have representatives from Costco. I'm sure we're gonna allow them to make comment. Maybe they can respond to that in their remarks.
Yeah, so this is John Paul Andrews. I am in the real estate department, so I'm not so keen on the products that we sell in each individual premises. I know it's not really common that we sell vaping products, if at all.
Mr. Andrews? Mr. Andrews, if you allow me to interrupt you, if you could give us your mailing address, sir?
Yes. My business mailing address at Costco is... let me put my glasses on so I can read this off too. Is 45940 Horshue Drive, Suite 150, Sterling, Virginia, 20166.
Go right ahead with your comments, sir. Thank you.
So, yeah, as I mentioned, I'm Director of Real Estate Development. So, I don't specialize in knowing the products in our stores, but I know it's not common that we sell smoking products in general nowadays. There are certainly locations where we still do. Vaping products, I've never personally seen vaping products in any of our stores. So, I don't believe we do in this, but I cannot say that 100% positively.
Is there anyone that can speak to that?
But I can say that this addition to the building is not introducing any new uses or any new products. So, we wouldn't be changing anything that is otherwise our day-to-day operations today. The expansion just simply allows the expansion of the existing steel racks for the current products as we sell them today.
Would you feel comfortable with us including a condition that says no vaping products?
If we need to do that, I would do that, yes.
Thank you for that, Susan. Thank you, Mr. Andrews, was it?
That's correct. Thank you.
I thank you, right? I'm a regular at Costco. I haven't seen any vaping products.
Yeah, I just checked your website, too, and there is nothing at our Costco Wholesale regarding vaping products. It doesn't even come up.
Right.
The operation of your tire service, sir, that won't change, will it? In other words, you're still just doing the pair?
That's right. None of our operations at this location would change regarding this expansion.
Thank you. Any other questions, commissioners?
Sure.
Ramona doesn't have any. Any other questions? Matt?
No, I'm good.
Kathy or Kevin?
Yes, sir.
No, thank you.
Susan?
Okay. The motion is to find that the applicant is currently operating a retail facility that sells food and beverages, electronics, pet food, provides a pharmacy, and dispenses gasoline, all of which qualify it as an essential retail business under the Governor's Executive Order Number 53 issued on March 23rd, 2020, that the establishment has member customers throughout the Hampton Roads region who are particularly in need of the essential goods and services provided, that the applicant is actively engaged in construction plans to expand the facility as current location, that because of the pandemic emergency, supplies of many of the essential goods and services provided at this facility are in high demand, and some of them are in short supply throughout the Hampton Roads region, and that delaying the consideration of this item will only worsen the negative effect. The motion would be to recommend approval of the conditional use permit subject to the conditions contained in the draft ordinance with the addition of the prohibition of the sale of vaping products. Ms. Austin? You got a text?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Ms. Shelton?
Yes.
Mr. Hales?
Aye.
And Mr. Fraley?
Aye.
Okay.
Make that recommendation to council. Good luck.
And that concludes our public hearing. I don't think any of us could... I understand this is an emergency meeting, but we did wanna mention that it is Lenny's last public hearing. Just wanted to mention, you know, Lenny, AKA Linwood, Leonardo, Mr. Newscom, with the City of Norfolk. He's attended 491 Planning Commission Public Hearings. He has testified in multiple landmark court cases for the City of Norfolk. He's been through at least four zoning ordinance. He is truly considered a historian of Norfolk. And he's got a lifetime of memories. And I can't talk enough about how much we will miss him.
Susan, you can ditto me on all... On that last part for sure. Lenny has been an icon of who Norfolk is and what Norfolk is. I enjoy, from time I was an employee, and especially now being on the commission, reminiscing with Lenny what it used to be, where and why it was there. We're gonna be... You're gonna be missed, Lenny. Not for long, but you will be missed.
You understand it's not an easy decision and that I have enjoyed every minute of all 41 years. I particularly enjoy the most recent years, and I can speak highly of the staff in the Planning Commission that we have right now. And it is a heavy heart that I take as I leave, but I think it is time.
Well, you'll get over that heavy heart, Lenny.
All right.
Hey, Lenny, we wish you all the best, indeed. You've been a vital cog in whatever we are able to accomplish, for sure. Your insight and input is indmeasurable and invaluable. And as you go into your retirement years, enjoy, my friend. You've earned the time.
And Lenny, I just wanted to say from a development perspective, back in the day,[1663.96] if I had something that was incredibly complicated and no one thought could be done, you were my first stop to try to get it done, and, and you always did, and you always gave me confidence that we could get some of those things that seemed almost impossible to get done, done. And so I, as a former employee that worked with you very closely, I cannot tell you how much I appreciated that in our years together. So you will be very much missed in the city, and I just hope you really enjoy it.
Well, thank you, Kathy, and you know the feelings are mutual.
Thanks, Lenny.
And we were supposed to have a retirement celebration for Lenny that is postponed. Obviously, it was supposed to be today, so look, look for your mouth.
Thanks, Susan.
Lenny, whether you like it or not, we love you.
Thank you, Earl.
Nothing you can do about it.
Thank you, Earl.
Commissioners, any other comment?
None from Matt Hales.
I didn't hear that.
I said, none from Matt Hales.
Okay. Adam, we need to say thank you to you, you're probably the engine that drove this train to get us to this point. So many thanks to you for pulling this together. And based on how quickly the resources of our great nation can, can attack this COVID-nineteen, we might, we might want to have to get used to this. We may have to do it this way going forward, let's hope not. But we thank you for your initiative on that. And George, I'll leave it for any comments that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, you know, we, we've talked for the last several years about the need, the city to be resilient, and build resilience into our plan. This is, this, this meeting and how we're meeting and talking back, that's, that's an example of how we are, can be resilient as a community, as a city, as a planning. I'm grateful that each and every one of you was able to take the time and participate today. And if we have to continue to do this, Ms. Austin, I'll, we will work with you to make, you know, get your, your technology up and running so that you are able to talk to us, not text, text. But thanks all. Everybody, please be well.
Thank you, George. Unless there's anything else at this point, Adam, I didn't want to steal the time from you, do you want to add anything at all?
No, sir.
With that, Commissioners and everybody involved, thank you, please stay safe, this is a very serious time, and we appreciate everyone's participation. Susan, we hardly ever say thank you to you, but we're gonna do it today, because we know that you went through, jumped through a lot of hoops to make this thing flow smoothly today. So thank you, many fold of you, Susan, for your dedication and commitment. And with that, we stand adjourned.